Yeah.
All right, welcome everyone to the Monday July the fourth meeting of the many of the whole community development. Nobody with us online at the present. And I guess the next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and need a mover on the second for the agenda. Moved by Chris Ward, seconded by Councillor Cameron, all in favor? Does anyone, number three is disclosure of any area interest or generally to area, does anyone have a disclosure to make? Councillor?
Okay, one.
Stepping away from table. Good. Anyone else hearing none? Going to number four, which is business arising from previous committee meeting minutes, if there are any, does anyone have? Right here. Business with Mr. Mayor.
So it's page seven. Toward item number eight, actually, towards the bottom of the item number eight. Bullet point begins with the word certification. Certification was requested on the timeline of validity of a building permit and if it is transferable. And I'm wondering if we got a clarification on that question to CAO.
Thank Mr. Chair. I believe that the timeline for the valid permit is six months. And I am not 100% sure on transferring that permit.
Sorry, through the chair, I did not clarify if it was transferable. I did give back to the person who had made that inquiry and sent her an email, which I thought was answering all of the questions. I don't think that I answered it was transferable or how it could be transferred.
Can I get that in for you?
Yeah, I can do that.
So, so do we have firm verification that a building permit is only good for six months? Because I know other jurisdictions, they're good for at least a year. But as a matter of fact, they are one year. I thought it was a requirement under the building code that they'd be valid for a year.
Chair, work needs to have started within six months for the building permit to be valid. If work has started, then it's fine. I think if work stops for a year, but. Should comment on that? I don't know for sure, but it's work needs to start within six months.
Thirty on that or follow up?
Okay, is that our bylaw then? That must be our bylaw.
The building code.
Building code? Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Anyone else with business arising from minutes? I'm sorry.
Just carry on what Mayor has started in six months, cut the leak and consider start. Just clear, start to clear the lot, actual construction.
That would be up to the chief of mission.
Pretty well clear. And driveway into.
Anyone else? All right, on to number five, which is delegations and presentations, there are none. Number six, A, which is live under land use planning, there's an application for severance at nineteen oh two Crowder Road. Hunter, just note for the record that Councillor Hunter has declared interest and has left the table. He will be joining us after, rejoining us after this item. To the community development coordinator, do you want to give us a little bit back there?
Thanks, checks. We have an application for severance, it's application B eighty-four twenty-two. It proposes to create a new lot for residential use from the existing lot with municipal address nineteen oh two Crowder Road. And the lot is one hundred and fifteen point four hectares with frontage on Crowder Road, Rock Street and County Road twenty-one. So it's a really large lot there. It's just east of the village of Spencerville. The property is home to naval surf park with accessory structures including a sugar chante. There is a license and active quarry on the property. The application proposes to create a new one point one hectare lot as each home for a dwelling and accessory garage. So the application does indicate there's a total frontage on County Road twenty-one of one hundred and seventeen meters, which would include what I identified in the report as a previous road allowance. I've done some more research since writing this report specifically in regards to bylaw nineteen eighty-eight dash thirty, which I thought was stopping up and closing that road allowance. It also gives the authority to the head of council and the clerk to sell that road allowance. Looking through some old survey plans and maps, it appears that that bylaw is actually closing up a road allowance that is between lot eighteen and the Center Commons, whereas this road allowance is right down the middle of the Center Commons. So I don't think that bylaw helps us, but all that to say is there is still plenty of frontage on this lot. So whether that road allowance to the east of it is included in the new lot or not, there is still enough frontage to do seventy meters for the severed portion and seventy meters for the retained portion on County Road twenty-one. And there is plenty of land to do that, to make the application happen. So the counties may request proof of ownership, like the deed for that land, if it's included in the severed lot, but I think from the township's section. We, I would conclude we'll recommend it in favor either. So the subject land is designated rural policy area and mineral aggregate resource policy area and the township's official plan and its own rural and mineral extraction accordingly in the township's zoning bylaw. The proposed new lot, though, is entirely within the rural area of this parcel. In fact, the proposed new lot is outside of the influence area of the quarry there. It's more than five hundred meters away from the quarry. The proposed new lot contains significant woodlands identified in schedule B of the township's official plan. So our OP provides that developed on lands within or used significant woodlands shall not be permitted unless it has been demonstrated that there will be no negative impacts to the woodlands or their ecological functions. The official plan also provides that the township and consultation with the conservation authority may either waive the requirement for environmental impact assessment or we could require a scope assessment. We have formal comments from the conservation authorities that are attached in the agenda package. And they recommend that as a condition of final approval, the applicant submit a scope environmental impact assessment for the proposed severed lot, demonstrating there will be no negative impacts on the present natural heritage features. Additionally, the recommendation provides that the assessment can be completed by the landowner and should include a screening for species at risk and species that are habitat, identify any unmarked natural features and identify a building problem and mitigation. The proposed new lot does comply with our zoning bylaw and staff's recommendations to the committee, is that committee recommend that council recommend in favor of severance B eighty-four twenty-two with the condition that an environmental impact assessment be submitted to the approval authority, Mr. Counties, to the satisfaction of the conservation.
Thank you to the board. Discussion, yes.
Yes, through the chair to, to Scott, perhaps Wendy would answer this. On page, I believe it's thirteen, yes, on page thirteen, there is colored pictures of the, of the property. The orange outline I see now on County Road twenty-two, there is a black line going down to. Is that the existing driveway?
Through the chair, if you see on the, on the map that says township official plan, schedule A, is that line shown in blue? Is that the same line?
Well, what page are we on?
On page thirteen, so there's two months.
Yes.
On the zoning bylaw map, it's black and on the official plan map, it's blue.
Well, I haven't got blue. I've got, I've got a picture with a lot of green on it. But on page thirteen. So we just, yeah, I'm just curious about this black line, whether or not that is the driveway. Or is that, is that a boundary?
So on the one beside it, I think on page thirteen thirty-five, the, the waterway is, is like gray or black and then it's blue in the side.
Yes.
Yes, I'm just trying.
More concerned about the dark, the darker line.
No, okay, I think I've just answered my own question. I do believe it's a boundary line. I'm just wondering where the, where the existing driveway is going into the, into the property.
Oh, so through the chair, there is a, if you take a look at page twelve, you'll see the blue outline of the subject land. And you'll see that there is a blue line there. So the subject is actually has a driveway. That's part of the, that's basically the same part of the retained lands.
Okay, so I guess is, is the blue line the driveway or not?
I believe there's a driveway there, yeah.
Yeah.
That is part of the.
All right.
Part of the lot.
Okay, thank you so much. Now it's clear. That's all.
Yeah, I'm still lost here. So I, I'm on page eleven thirty-five. And on page eleven thirty-five, the severed lot, you know, on my presentation that I have here, is outlined in yellow. And, and what is the frontage of that yellow on County Road twenty-one?
Seventy meters.
How much?
Seventy meters.
Seven?
Seven zero.
Seven zero meters, all right. So that's on County Road twenty-one. All right, then what is the frontage of the retained lands on County Road twenty-one?
The application indicates it's one hundred meters.
Well. One hundred is more than seventy and on my map, the frontage on twenty-one is a lot smaller than the frontage of the severed lands on my map that I have in front of me. And I'm looking with something that's outlined in blue. Says outlined in blue retained lands. That's a, you're telling me that's a hundred?
Yes.
Well.
Sorry. So the retained, retained lands would be seventy and severed land.
What?
Through the chair, I have a copy of the application.
Yeah, that makes sense. Retained seventy and severed a hundred, that makes sense.
Through the chair, I, I think that the sketch is done on a scale map, but the, the sketch itself is not scaled. The severed lot, the application form indicates a severed lot is seventy meters and a frontage and the retained is one hundred.
Well, that's certainly not to scale.
Well, as a condition of the severance, I know the counties will require a survey to be done.
Okay, so now I'm looking at still on page eleven of thirty-five. Now there was a reference to an unopened road allowance between lot nineteen and lot eighteen called common, common concession six. And, and there was talk about stopping up and closing, but I'm, I'm, it's not clear in my mind as a result of the commentary, what exactly it is that has been stopped up and closed? And, and was it divided like into two halves? And one half conveyed and the other half not conveyed? What, what is going on in there?
So through the chair, because in the application form seems to indicate that that road allowance is included as part of the subject land.
Part of the.
Part of the, it's part of nineteen oh two Crowder Road.
Right, and it looks like it's part of the severed, will remain part of the severed.
Well, in this sketch, it doesn't look like it's going to be, but the, when you look at the measurements, it seems like it was meant to be included there. So the, the road allowance is that line right in the middle of the center common there. So there's lot eighteen and then there is smaller than a full lot, that's the center common. And then there is lot nineteen that is in the, the subject land. So the, the road allowance goes right down the middle of the center common.
Okay, and is the road allowance the one that's on the east side, the, the right hand side?
Yes, through the chair, it would be, in, in the map on page eleven, it would be directly to the east or right hand side of the severed and retained.
Right, okay, all right. So the, the severed lot is then one point one hectares. And where exactly is the entrance to the quarry on this map that's on page eleven of thirty-five? I think that's what was just being talked about before, but I'm not so sure. I just want to clarify that. So that entrance that comes off of County Road twenty-one to the quarry, where exactly is it on this map, on these maps?
Through the chair, there's a, there's a strip of land in between those two existing lots that are renting onto County Road twenty-one. You can better see that it exists on page twelve. Because we can see that blue line there.
Okay, so I see what you're saying, which just comes off of County Road twenty-one and goes to that east coast boundary. Okay, thank you very much. I think that answers most of my questions. So are we still then not sure of what happened to that road allowance?
Through the chair, that's correct. I have bylaw nineteen eighty-eight dash thirty, which I thought indicated that the road allowance was stopped up and closed. But further investigation today, and looking at some old surveys and some maps, there was actually a road allowance that is between lots. It's between lots eighteen and Center Commons, so it's a little bit further west. And I found the surveys that divided up that road allowance that we convey half of it to the property owner to the east and the other half to the property owner to the west in nineteen eighty-eight, at the same time that the, the bylaw was, was passed. So I, I don't think that nineteen eighty-eight dash thirty is actually a bylaw to stop up and close that, that road allowance in, in question here with this application. The land registry office indicates that the township is the owner of the, this road allowance here. I don't know, because I, I know the applicant believes that he's the owner of, of this, this roadway or this road allowance here. So I don't know if an error has been made at, at some time or if. I, I, I just don't know. I wasn't able to find any group that the applicant is the owner of that road allowance. Land registry office says that the township is the owner of that road allowance. So as long as some group can be provided to the counties, I know they would, they could work with that.
Okay, so I guess my question was something like this. If the if the consent granting authority grants the consent for the severance, will that issue be part of the cleanup? If I, I put it that way? Will that issue be resolved? That, I'm calling it an outstanding issue because we don't know.
It, it may be. I think if that's going to be included as part of the severance, the county is going to ask for the deed or proof that that's owned. And then we could figure out what the next steps are to, to clean that up. If, I, I know that as a condition of the severance, that the counties is going to require a, a survey done of the severed lot. I think there are a lot of surveyors out there who can do that research and find out the history of the parcel and could probably clean that up. So I would still leave, I would leave that up to the counties to.
Okay, I got you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
That's a good one. I just had a couple. Think. By law, from what, from what, when I looked at it, isn't lot eighteen? Isn't that road allowance on lot eighteen, not nineteen?
Well, it's between the two.
Through the chair, the road allowances on the center commons between lot eighteen and lot nineteen, so it's a road allowance right down the middle of that center common.
So it's not on eighteen? Okay, second question, will there be a driveway off of this severed slot on County twenty-one?
Through the chair, where we need to be, and that would be subject to approval of the, the county, so the road authority on County twenty-one.
Yeah.
Chris, did you?
Thinking about five hundred meter thing, but I answered it beforehand, so.
No questions.
Yeah, so just a question. This is the second, and it has really nothing to do with this, so I hope you'll give a bit of leeway. This is about the second or third time that I've come across this term common. And I, I take it to mean that it's a, a strip of land that's between two surveyed lots. In this case, it's between eighteen and nineteen. We're dealing with another one at county council, it's the same kind of a thing. It's called a common lot. Is there any kind of historical background to the, this term of common? Was it originally intended to be a road or a road roadway? Or do we know what's behind it all? Because I've just, it's only just recently that I've seen the term and it's now appeared, appeared three times in the last month. Do we know?
Through the chair, I, I don't want to present myself as an expert. I, I don't think it's meant to be a, a road allowance, it's certainly much wider than our regular road allowance. In fact, this road allowance we're talking about is only a strip down the center of the center common. But I mean, lot eighteen is quite wide, I'm going to guess, two hundred meters wide. Like the township is divided into concessions, east west of lots, north and south. And lot eighteen, let's say it's two hundred meters wide, lot nineteen is two hundred meters wide. The center commons isn't two hundred meters like the rest of them, so it's just a, I think of them as like a placeholder. You don't have a, a full width to make a new lot, it's just.
And were they sold off or did, like, did, I mean, lot eighteen would have an owner, lot nineteen would have an owner, but the center commons or the thing that's called commons, it, it, does its ownership always vest in the township?
No, no, through the chair, the lot eighteen, you can see there are many different lots on lot eighteen that have a lot.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Yeah, and the center commons would be the same thing, treated differently.
Okay, thanks very much.
Just not as wide.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Recommendation.
Mayor, just move the recommendation as threatened. Seconded, seconded by Councillor Cameron. Any further comment? I'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Everyone's comments, thank you, or presuming, chair and councillor. I've been overlooked, Wendy, your board, I go with the center commons. My deed shows that I own the center commons. All.
All.
That is not a road allowance, it never has been a road allowance, it doesn't even show up in your maps in the road allowance. The road allowance shows up on all of eighteen. Brown Severance Inn today has shown it. Where the Severance Road Allowance is allowed on the common, eighteen.
So it's on eighteen, not nineteen?
Nineteen, this is a private road that my great grandfather built when we were on the border. The old gravel pit that we accessed, built the road to take gravel both ways. Private road.
CAO, did you want to say something?
Through, through the chair, what, what we come across today in doing the, the research with land registry. It's that particular strip is, it appears to be owned by the township and noted as a road allowance. Looking back at some of those other maps, it looks to me like at one point it was sort of a, a private farm lane back in, in, in some of the references, but it appears like in two thousand and nine with, with that transferable to, to land registry, it may very well have been inadvertently recognized as a road allowance. That's what we're just not sure of.
Which, which?
In which, which, which we need to work.
And it will get cleared up when it goes, when it goes to land.
That's true, clear on a survey. Yeah, it's, it's.
I pay taxes on it for our family for over a hundred eighty years, years, we own this land and the center commons wait to find, the township's performance from both sides. When you come to center, each farm is forty broad, forty broad, there's twenty broad left in the center. Look at all of farms on lot eighteen and nineteen, all the way through the township. Each one of them are a hundred and twenty-five acres, everybody else is a hundred acres. They were deep on, those farms all become fifty broad farms instead of forty. So, moving right from that.
Okay.
Well.
Through the chair, yes, there, there, there's just some discrepancies in, in, in the various systems.
Sure.
Just have to work through that.
Okay. I think you can come back to Councillor.
One question I was taking, you see, just remind me if you would, what's a rod? I can't remember, there are people, you should know.
So five and a half, half yard or seventeen and a half.
All right, so, no, for the record, the Councillor Hunter has resumed his chair. We'll move on to item six, A two, which is more of a mention item, which is the telecommunications tower at nine zero six six County Road forty-four.
Through the chair, the township has received a proposal to install a forty-five meter self-support tower site at nine zero six six County Road forty-four by Xornet Communications Incorporated. So this proposed facility would require a fifteen meter, a fifteen meter land area for the compound, which would include forty-five meter tower and equipment and backup generator. The facility will be set at the north end of the parcel. The parcel is currently developed at the south end of the housing dwelling. Access to the site is planned by an existing entrance way, also at the north end of the parcel. So in the past, the township has used site plan control process where a telecommunications site is proposed. But with more recent applications, the township has requested that the proponent provide a letter of undertaking, which would include the requirements of our standard site plan control agreement. Xornet has provided a signed letter of undertaking to the township. And we know that as a federal undertaking, Xornet is required by innovation, science and economic development candidate to consult with land use authorities and citing new tower locations. But the provisions of the Ontario Planning Act and other municipal bylaws do not apply to federal undertaking. The site selection and justification report provided by the applicant outlines how Xornet has met I S D's requirements. The staff recommendation is that committee recommends that council accept a letter of undertaking from Xornet Communications Incorporated as attached regarding a telecommunications facility at nine zero six six County Road forty-four. And that council requests that Xornet Communications Incorporated provide the township with a copy of any comments or concerns raised during the public consultation period. And that provided no concerns are raised during the public consultation period, council directs staff to provide a letter of agreement to Xornet Communications.
So, so at the title here at the top, through the chair, the title at the topic says telecommunications tower, tower nine zero sixty-six County Road forty-four in bracket, Status Group Inc. Are they the owners of ninety sixty-six?
Through the chair, the property owner is Joseph Brown.
Um, Stratus Group Inc. is making the, um, the application of the proposal on behalf of ExplorNet Communications.
So, uh, sorry, what was that name again, Joseph Graff?
Yeah.
G R A P H?
G R A F.
I do remember reading that, I can't, just can't find it right now. Okay, thanks.
Right.
Oh.
Con.
Uh, through the chair, is this, is this the same project as we, as we had a, a few months ago at the same approximate location, I believe it was Freedom Mobile?
Through the chair, I think that was a different property that's a little bit south of this one, so to compare the two applications.
Yeah, I think that was a, I believe, Renner Farms, which is, I think, like, the adjacent property, how far apart are these towers supposed to be?
Chair, I don't think it's in the don't know if it's in the adjacent property, I know it's not the same property, um. I, it's not in the justification report, I could do some research on how far apart the towers need to be.
Or maybe the other one's not going ahead.
We could make an inquiry Freedom Mobile. So, but they, they have every shift to meet the same requirement, so.
Should we be approving two that are next to each other, but if one goes up, then it stops the other one? I just wanted to break it back up so we can predict what that.
I think the other one was down at, uh, Lenzville Road, is that?
That's not going to miss her.
Forty-four.
That's a, yeah. They're going up, just like.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so, through the chair, this is a different tower, like, this is not a cell phone tower, this, this, this is, it's similar technology, it's not the same. It's exactly, it's more of a freedom there, right? Uh, and all I was wondering is, is through the chair, if they've indicated their timeline, I know they don't have to, but have they indicated a timeline? Thing is, uh, this up would be a question I have.
Through the chair, the inquiry, um, originated last year, um, and they recently submitted their proposal, I believe, because um, they were ready to go ahead with the project shortly, but I don't seem to have an exact timeline written down.
Through the chair, no, I, I was just, you know, so it sounds like they have an intention to do it sooner than ever.
Okay, so one more due diligence question here, just, uh, to be careful. We have, in the briefing note under background, the application has been made by Status Group Inc., contracted by ExplorNet Communications Inc., and acting with approval from the property owner, Joseph Graff. Do we have a written document from Joseph Graff indicating that they are his agents?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just going back to Connor's questions, kind of, sort of breezed by it. We're not really we're not really approving anything, right? We don't have the ability, am I incorrect in saying that?
So you're correct, this, they're not looking for approval, um. We look at it more as a consultation, and we're welcome to submit comments. We can make suggestions, I know they're, they're eager and willing to, to work with us, it's much like those in our industry, we welcome your comments.
In the, in the, in the policy implication, I mean, it points out that, uh, the communication facilities are not required to obtain maintenance permits. And ExplorNet is required to follow established and documented telecommunications protocols and processes, I, I mean, is it safe to assume that by land use authorities, is it safe to assume that that would need a, you know, a distance separation requirement or something like that, or we don't even know if there is?
Through the chair, our township doesn't have its own, um, protocol or, or process that, um, that is followed, we, um, by default, follow I S C T's, trust communication, say.
Okay. I don't know if I followed it up well enough for you or not, so.
I told the tower, we had an item for previously is has not been cancelled, but has not been updated, nor has it broken ground. So I think that would be C T C, uh, or C F, C F C rules that they would have to follow if there's a new one going up next to an existing one, or vice versa. But in, at Angelo's, or at the Husky, there's two very close to each other, so I don't know when I'll shut that.
Certainly something that we're going to face in the future, there's, you know, we're going to, I think we're going to continue over the next while to see many applications. Certainly along four sixteen and, and certainly that, that corridor. Did you want to know the distances, or was it a concern? We can certainly, if many wants, we can certainly get that information.
No, I, I just was, was wanting to bring it up. Okay. But, but it's, it's, it's a good point, though, I do wonder if, if, uh, we can ask things that maybe to see, because, you know, I think we don't, it didn't seem like we had a choice in the past, um, so it'd be nice to know what the rules are, uh, because these things can happen, because there's so many companies that are reserving these things, and they don't then use them, and at some point, you know, if they have the towers up, they could be too close together, I mean, we are, we're not experts in this field here, obviously, nobody in this room is like me. It would be nice to know that somebody's at least, you know, watch, do a watch on that, so.
Any comments for finding one for our location, or something?
Well, for, for me, I, it, it I don't think they're close. The previous, uh, tower that we spoke about, I don't think it's that close. Um, there is a map there that does show other towers, three other towers within, in the area. Two of them are very close together, red, white, blue, quite close together. But I, 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 I think, I mean, C R T C is the, is, is, is the governing body, and, and also, we have to remember too, that these are on private property. It's not that they're on township property. Uh, they're on private property, and if, if an owner of the property wants to go into a transaction with, with a telecommunications company for perhaps future use or something else, that's his business. So, um, I have to me, it just really, really, really doesn't matter, uh.
Uh, I don't know who's next, councillor.
I just, I know a lot of us. Chris there, I'd like to know, copy of what, like, Jack ruled are, like, C R T C, uh, but their policy is about, they put these towers up, about sharing them, like, a tower was up more than one company could use, uh, a tower, like, all right, some of these are getting awful close together, why do we get freedom putting one up here, or not, up not one there, why don't they get together and and work a system where the position there, uh, there's something in here about not being one tower, not being close enough for their grid system or something, why don't they get together and set the grid system so when they position them, they can use their towers, that everybody go on kind of like the Wild West here, go and, just, you can get towers up and get service quicker to an area there. Don't see, or T C seems kind of an awful lot of control or something, they seem, that list is run wild, so. Nice to have a little bit of information, but what actually governs them.
Right. Well, picking up from councillor Hunter, this isn't like the Wild West, this is the Wild West. And, uh, at this point, all we have is the ability, and we should be thankful that we have the ability to get letters on file that give us some background and also some specific information as to where these towers are being located. Uh, because, uh, certainly, we've got at least three major projects on right now, which is closing of the cell gap. Um, that project, and we've got the five G project, which is trying to roll out with a lot of, uh, over-the-air, uh, facility. Um, by and large, a lot of these towers are, are being cited, I, in other words, that the locations are being, uh, picked out, like, put it that way, by companies that are in the tower rental business. And they, uh, they, they attempt to find a, a renter, in this case, ExplorNet, but if you'll notice, the tower rent, the tower owner is Status Group Inc. So, the way I conceive it in my mind is that Status Group Inc. has found a, a renter, ExplorNet Communications, so on the basis of that tenant, they've got this site. So they know they have at least one, uh, at least one, uh, um, renter. However, what can happen between now and the time to get the tower built is that ExplorNet welches on a deal and goes and puts a, a, a radio on some other existing tower, uh, which may be maybe even closer than this one needs to be, or, I mean, for a hundred different reasons. And consequently, there's an awful lot of sites that are being approved, not approved, that's not the word, that are being, um, picked out and, and, um, located on various municipal maps, where the towers actually don't get built, or in some cases, other towers get abandoned. Now, the marketplace theoretically takes care of some of it, because if I'm an owner, and I've, I've given you space on my land to build a tower, I expect rev, I expect revenue from that tower, so when the revenue ceases, I have a right to say, do you get that tower off my property? Whether or not property owners realize they have that right or not's a different thing. But I think, you know, we're going to see a lot of these applications, there's two hundred and fifty new towers being built in eastern Ontario just for the Eorn project alone. That's the Eorn Close the Cell Gap project. Two hundred and fifty towers, that's a lot of towers, and I know, so, I think at one time I was told that six of them would be in our township. And that doesn't count the towers where Eorn is going to install new radios on existing towers. It's going to be interesting, and I think we should just not spend a lot of time on these things, because distance between towers, there's so many different factors here. Towers can be for cell grab and cell phone use, they can be for internet use, they can be for five G use, right? Some of them just interesting way that technology's built. Oh, absolutely.
Sorry, sorry there.
Well, we
We have sidelined it, so.
Yeah. All right, good, so there is a recommendation, and that's that we.
Through the chair, sorry, sorry, I just had one less matter clarification, um, I, I, I just wanted to clarify, there, there was, uh, a tower proposed for Hans Road. Uh, off of Lenzville Road, there was one at Husky, uh, there was two in this immediate location that I'm talking about in County Road forty-four, and then there was one on the north side of the open road, east of the four sixteen. But those are the different ones, and the one I'm, with, the one I was asking about was immediately south of this one. Less, less than three hundred meters, I would say.
Not built yet, no.
No. That's all, thank you.
Good, so, recommendation is that committee recommends that council accept a letter of undertaking from ExplorNet Communications as attached regarding a telecommunications facility at nine, ninety sixty-six County Road forty-four, and the council requests that ExplorNet Communications Incorporated provide the township with a copy of any comments or concerns raised during the raised during the public consultation period, and that provided no concerns are raised during the public consultation period, council direct staff to provide a letter of conference to ExplorNet Communications Incorporated, and I have a move by councillor Hunter, and the secretary, councillor Cameron, all in favor.
Aye.
Oh. None. Whatever. Okay, so, we are on sixteen, which is economic development, and I believe that when he has a small update on community improvement product areas. Sorry, when the, when the, again, the development coordinator, as, as not the.
Uh, my story. Through the chair, uh, committee members, uh, requested back in April that a report be prepared to outline the process to get Johnstone, um, as a community improvement project area. I've done some research and included it here in this report, it is pretty general in, um, in nature, but just, uh, a quick summary. Section twenty-eight of the Planning Act provides that where there is an official plan in effect, that contains provisions relating to community improvement in municipality, the council may, by bylaw, designate a whole or any part of an area covered by the official plan as a community improvement project area. When this bylaw is passed, the council may prepare a plan for the project area, which may be adopted and come into effect as a community improvement plan, so that's the C I P. The adoption of a C I P requires consultation with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and at least one statutory public meeting. Um, and the plan is subject to appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Now, our official plan designates the entire township as a community improvement area, and provides that council may, by bylaw, designate lands within this area as a community improvement project area. This is in section seven point five, um, of our official plan, and I've attached an excerpt from our official plan, but, um, committee members may review that section, um, so we have two C I Ps in effect right now, one in Cardinal, that was, um, adopted in twenty twelve, and one in Sessibul that was adopted in twenty thirteen. And I've just outlined in this report the steps that were taken to prepare each of those C I Ps. Um, they include a financial incentive program that appears to be, um, aimed at improving the downtown core areas, like the Passon Property Improvement Program, that we see uh, many applications for, um, also the application in building from a fees rebate program, a heritage property improvement program, tax increase based equivalent rebate program, downtown housing improvement program, and a project feasibility program, that's in the Cardinal C I P, only not in Sessibul. Um, so as next steps, um, committee might have consideration for section seven point five of the official plan, there's, there's one policy in there that, um, outlines areas that council should have consideration for, um, when selecting a community improvement project area. Those are like that there is evidence of a need to improve municipal services, um, or uh, there's a significant number of buildings in an area that show signs of deterioration and need of repair. There is evidence that the adoption of a community group plan would, um, help in the remediation or the redevelopment of a project area. Uh, improvement to the visual appearance, appearance or aesthetics is required. But, uh, improvements will have a significant impact on strengthening the economic base of the community. No staff recommendations here, it's just an information item, as requested by committee members.
Is there discussion on this, does anyone have any comments or questions?
Uh, yes, I, I would like to, uh, see, we can't get a piece, uh, quotation of, of this all. Look into this. Like, there, there'll be the cardinal special one. Like, not, well, it's, it's pretty put forward, so, kind of like the at least get ball rolling on it.
What do you mean?
Well, it says, uh, they recommend council staff to engage with a consulting firm, so at least open to maybe some consulting firm. Uh, price-wise, maybe bring some, this information back to the C D C. Information of a consulting firm, what they're going to do, what the cost is.
Me, and, and we talked with, talked this a lot, and it's, it's too bad, uh, Mr. Hunter was not here about the topic of this, for sure. Yeah, uh, I mean, you know, and, and Johnstone is definitely a different, in, in certain aspects, and the, the Johnstones are, they're both essential in Cardinal. Uh, and it'd be nice to, sort of, you know, I, I think.
Uh and it'd be nice to sort of, you know, I I think Johnstown would serve our, you know, our bedrock for for communities. Their housing essentially, we have to have somebody that, to the council's point. Uh take a look, see something we can do and help broaden that to get more traction to that area.
I think one reason that Johnstown wasn't. Looked forward. Correctly, the all these. And the only money we can give out is to to revenue units or commercial. Doesn't allow for residential tools to. Individual residential units to apply for money for.
The CIPs that we have in place right now, so those plans. Um the financial incentive programs that are part of those plans apply to commercial properties.
This is my concern, I I don't, I don't see what, I don't, if I could see a program that would fit. The type of a program that would fit it just on, I I might persuade it here, but I can't conceive of a program that would. That we could institute that would be of benefit, you know. It's it's commercially oriented and we have no commercial in Johnstown.
We have two uh, we have two motels, Mr. Air.
Well.
We have a huge angel restaurant, Mr. Air.
You know what, those restaurants not in the settlement area of Johnstown. And the motel, there's one motel there in the west side. And then, yes, we have a, and we do have McEwen's, that's true. Those are commercial areas, but. And a region, well, no, it's not in the settlement area. It's also, am I wrong? I guess we can identify the settlement area.
Right, so, so the the way that I understand this is that the entire township under our new O P becomes part of the community improvement area. Then we.
Pick a project area.
Right, then we have to define the project area. So, I mean, the two project areas as selected in the past were Cardinal and Spencerville. The idea that's been pushed for almost, well, at least four years, maybe longer than four years. Is that somehow Johnstown gets some recognition as a project area. And, I mean, as a chair, I certainly incur that we've had decent uptake on. Both Spencerville, Cardinal, I suppose, for for CIP. But we've never had the opportunity or given the folks in Johnstown the opportunity to even do some uptake, so.
I mean, you know, that block seven point five point four talks about, you know, and I know that the reason that Johnstown was touched on that was because of the commercial, there was of course. And and, you know, there there's now other incentives for, you know, in seven point five point four. Um to encourage residential intensification. And 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 so there's, there's, there's things out there now to update that. So then a question comes into, can we leverage new CIPs potentially out there? It helps if we can get something from Johnstown to pressure that. You know, that may encourage some businesses to come along as well for, you know, small local stores or whatever else. But that's an offset of the intensity of residential in that area.
Counselor.
Beauty, I haven't heard about Carter here, maybe CEO. We we used to have a program in the town township, loan program for home improvement. What it's called now, a hundred years ago. Someone gave us so much money, I think, so much money related there over a period of low interest. Like shit or something, okay, paid for, particularly for residential properties and proved, I think. Died a number of years ago, and I still put a fund in it. We looked off for a number of years, money was being paid back. Whatever happened, that's still a county. One of the township, something like that would be more in the line, I think, for a lot of places in Johnstown. In some kind of program like that. Yeah, well, for for a few businesses out there, we could help them out. Houses up there, really. We had some kind of a program like that, residential.
Through the chair, I mean, so, yeah, at the county, the the home improvement loan program still is in existence. Through the, through the United Counties. And the other thing that's in existence now that pertains to residential. There are two programs that pertain to the construction of additional residential units. Within existing residential lots. And the first program is for private homeowners. Uh to add additional residential units in their residence. Or as a separate building on the same piece of property, that's the first program. The second program is for companies that are in the rental business. To apply for loans to create additional uh additional residential units for rental purposes. So both of those programs are are new programs at United Counties. And each program will provide the the property with a twenty-five thousand dollar upfront grant. So those are still available, those are, that's new available. And the home improvement loans that you're talking about, that's still in existence. An old program through the social, uh through the housing department.
Yeah, that's true. That's what happened with the money that we had, we were getting paid back. The county's just trying to take that, that over and absorb all the township's payback money that we got.
Through, through, through the chair, that's a good, that's a good, that's a good question, I think we'll have to just do a little bit of follow up on that.
It's a number of years ago now.
There's no place on our balance sheet. There's no place on our balance sheet or any balance control.
No, I'm not, like, I'm not sure. To the upper lower tier. Uh in in instead of the individual lower tiers, I'm not, not one hundred percent. I I do some. Over what county it is just. Some maybe. Some remires along the way, maybe. Presser, cabinet ministry there, the thing of this is a program which should be considered, we're throwing money around every place else. Might be a program considered bring back. Low interest, all the way, interest go on, people can afford to fix their own, so.
If it further, just.
Uh to the chair, uh maybe to the CEO, I would, I would like to uh see if we can get some information on that. Uh home improvement, for sure. Criteria to. Sorry.
As part of a CIP or?
No, this is part, yeah, it is. You thought about county, yeah, the home improvement loan that's out there. Carder Homes, I knew those two new ones, but I didn't know that the home improvement loan even existed.
Did you want us to? No, just through the chair, we'll, we'll do some follow up on that.
Okay, so, I think it's very quick, but just, I think this conversation just just spurs along. We've got, you know, whether for Johnstown particularly or otherwise, you know, they, you know, some sort of an expert or a consultant to help us to figure out what other CIPs are potentially. That if we're just making this, it's possible, right? So I do think there's some area you actually, you know, at least a discussion of what would cost to look at this and these incentive programs.
Yes.
Through, through, through the chair, uh like I think with respect to the community room project area, really need to. Define the purpose and scope. Right? So we just, you know, just from the definition, that the uh means of municipality in the area. And with, within the municipality, the community improvement, which in the opinion of council is designed because of age, dilapidation, overcrowding, faulty arrangement. Unsuitability of buildings or any other environmental, social or community economic basis. I think just realistically is, if you figure out the scope and and purpose even before you work to sort of. Uh look for any kinds of consultants or anything else like that, because the last thing you want to do is sort of get sort of carte blanche. Go back with the, like a proposal, like, you you know, if you could focus it, it goes through. You know, I don't expect this this meeting, but you know, give some thought to the, to to sort of a framework with respect that you're looking at. Is it, because I think within, within both Spencerville and Cardinal, the focus seemed to be on those commercial buildings and revitalizing that. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll call it Main Street area. So it's like, you know, is is that the same for Johnstown or is it something completely different? And, you know, I think it's just, give some thought to that.
Yeah, certainly, and there's nothing to say that, that not, like, any area can't be done. It's just, you have to define or declare a project area, you know, figure out the reasons why. So, yeah, exactly, yeah. Uh, comment.
Through the chairs of the community development coordinator, currently, there's a limitation that. A project property can only use CIP program funding once. Is there a reset on that? Or could there be an implementation for ten or fifteen years? So that. You could do another. CIP funding on a property after a lot amount of time.
Uh, to the chair, the thing, um, the, the Planning Act allows. Where it's part of a community improvement plan. It allows council to give loans and grants to our spends and their Chinese for rebuilding, rebuilding improvements. Um as long as it's not greater than the amount that is allowed in that CIP plan that council adopts. They can set that amount. Our CIP plans for Spencerville and Cardinal, um there are five or six different uh financial grant programs. Um each of them have a limit and and combined can't equal more than ten thousand dollars per property. Um if you wanted to amend the plan to increase that, that limit up, you'll need to increase. This limit or come up with a new plan altogether with a different limit or to to reset it as you mentioned, that would be a little bit too. Right, it's it's not that you can only apply once, it's a certain dollar amount limit. So you could make three applications and combine if you don't see the.
So that, that would be something that this committee would have to propose to amend the existing regulations for the CIP.
It would be an amendment to, it may be an amendment to our current CIP that would require a statutory meeting. And be subject to.
Through the chair, your, your coordinator, uh. Is this, uh, like, ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand, ten thousand? Is that bound to the property where? Or not, property, the start of the property?
To the chair, it's a start to the.
Move on to. Six C, which is play, nothing. So let's move on to seven, which is inquiries and notices. Does anyone have a queries or notices? That's okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to staff, I was just, just uh asking a question. After, after our beautiful Canada Day fireworks display. Uh there is several piles of sand still at the, at the Richardson's Point area. Uh I was just wondering if uh our departments had ideas to push that sand out towards the water where the beach, beach area is. If that is in in the works.
So through the, uh, through, through the chair, I I certainly anticipate that typically, uh after, after those events. That that the, that that area is levelled office as time permits.
Thank.
I I, and also through your, I'm not sure if the, if the plan is to to leave that in place until the, uh, intention in that Labor Day event.
Yeah, it's only two months away, so, yeah. Anyway, thank, thank you for that.
Uh, I'd just like to comment on the Cardinal Festival Committee for putting on that day. I was down there for six, seven hours and it was great, and I have to commend that. Thank the Cardinal Festival Committee and the Cardinal Legion and all the volunteers. Well organized and I've seen so many kids have so much fun in all my life, so. To those, to those people, a small community, it was a great night. And I just can't say enough, and another thing I'd like to bring up is there. Part-time staff, I went down Sunday morning to see how everything is. I missed the fireworks a little too late for me, so. Uh just Sunday, see how everything was. And they have a little issue with the plumbing in the, in the one bathroom. And by value, this young lad told me exactly what was wrong and what he's going to do and, and not to worry. So I tell you, I pass out on Mr. Spencer, uh, that he has some good young part-time workers taking care of the, the park down there. So, well done, thank you.
Well.
I just like to comment through the chairs of the staff. Team this year, for the first time, we've got flower baskets on the main street, Spencerville here. And we get a lot of comments, us have nicely, I don't know, who's doing water on, not doing water. Can be folded, folding up pretty well. And a lot of good comments, but being there, a lot of kind of side words comments. So Spencer family rated baskets, Cardinal's had them for years, so. Everybody seems to be really enjoying them, they're doing a great job, baskets along the bridge, really the good flower boxes there.
That's rough to do, so. Going that way every day.
And Jeff Hopkins do a lot of water, I was wanting to shoot, but. It's just, that's down the rec staff, they're doing a good job and the people at Spencer will appreciate them.
Want to follow up?
Uh, yes, thank you, thank you. Just, and also to follow up with Council Billabon's uh discussion. Uh, I was, I was down at the park on Sunday morning as well. And I have to, I have to, I really do have to comment on this. That the, the, the park from east to west was in, I want to say, almost immaculate shape. It was extremely well, well picked up, there was one or two plates around, but it's only one, only one or two. So uh it was either if our staff picked it up, that's fantastic. Or perhaps the John Q Club is realizing what their which is.
There was lots of them there.
They was, yes.
Neither.
We'll just, not just minor, I mean, it's just echoing everybody else's saying that, you know, I guess, I guess, you know, must be a lot of good people on staff. Because ditches of men are in the rural roads as well, they're all very good as well, so they've been a great job, a lot of that close people, so looking great around the whole area.
Thanks, Chris, Mayor, call. Uh, I do have one to uh have added to the appropriate committee. Um, a couple of weeks ago, in our correspondence, there was a request. Uh for the consideration of a young, young citizen or a couple of young citizens of the year. So for whatever the appropriate committee is to to bring that forward from correspondence, so that we can, we can have a discussion at the table about it. I think that's a fantastic idea to celebrate the youth, especially the youth. I'm not sure that the whole thing, but that's a discussion for the table, uh just wherever that it, it was, or whatever that correspondence was. Back to the property.
Further to that. So further to that, that, that correspondence was in our package for the week of June the eighth from Abby McIntyre. And I've been speaking to her, although I spoke to her twice, but we haven't yet had an opportunity to get down to detail here. But I took the letter that she, uh, that we received on June the eighth, and I just gave it tonight to. I took the letter that she that we received on June the eighth and I just gave it tonight to the CIO and it, this concept of the junior citizens of the year award. I've asked him to put it on the agenda for the admin finance committee meeting next week, actually. So we can at least get the ball rolling at that point. In the meantime, I'll be speaking to Abby McIntyre once more. She's from Spencerville. I was speaking to her and and getting a a kind of a feel on whether or not she could get involved with the program and how we might roll it out. I think what we do for citizens of the year.
Well, yeah, we don't just leave it for the discussion. Yeah, 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 that's. Did you want to say something to that, CEO?
Not not particularly to that, but earlier on, we we had this discussion with the building permits.
Oh, building permits, yes.
Building permits. So section eight, subsection ten speaks to revoking of permits and if after six months after the issuance, the construction or demolition in respect of which is issued has not, in the opinion of the chief building official, been seriously commenced.
Six months. Section?
Section eight, subsection ten.
More comment, we brought up the youth there. Remember a little while back, we had county developer, the one for Ontario to here.
Yeah, so they're taking nominations for entrepreneur of the year to be awarded at the November. Economic Development Summit. Well, now's the time to bring them forward because I mean, it takes the county time to put the program together and theoretically, they've always had at least ten or twelve nominations, which they, depending on on how well the the applicant is described. They narrow that down to three.
So do you want to add it to some?
Discussion.
Can we add that to a future committee, appropriate one for discussion? And you wanted a quick?
I I do. As a matter of fact, I just picked up my resume package tonight, which was sent out earlier. And if you just look at the very last line, the president's goals are going to have a fiftieth anniversary celebration and they are requesting some kind of recognition. So I'd just like to bring that, bring that out that that after all, fifty year, fifty year anniversary is quite good.
Staff's ahead of it. I signed it today.
Then then thank you so much, all.
All right. So no further inquiries, nobody in the gallery for question period. There's no closed session, so I need a mover for adjournment. Counselor Hunter, second by Chris Ward, all in favor?